Welcome to the April 19, 2023, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us.
We are delighted to have each of you with us. And at this time, I would ask Madam Clerk for a roll call.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Paris.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the March 15th redistricting workshop and the March 15th, 2023, regular meeting of the city commission.
We take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any additions, questions, comments? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. At this time, we'll have our agenda approved. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we are looking at item 8D, the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, adding the following donation requests. Mayland High School Girls Basketball, Mayor Henry, $3,000. Baldi Athletics, Mayor Henry, $3,000. Mr. and Mrs. Mentoring, Commissioner Henry, $1,000. Item 8D, the five-year lease agreement with Friends of the Benchell for use of the Oceanfront Benchell, a revised agreement as stated earlier because of typographical errors, and to clarify, CRE funding has been placed on the dais for review if needed. Thank you.
I move that we accept the agenda with the said corrections.
A second.
All right, we'll take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. Are there any additional questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to item six, which is our presentations. Item 6A is the April 2023 Beautification Award Winners. A member of the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to present.
Mayor Henry, members of the commission, Mr. Fiecher. My name is Sharon Weatherholtz. I live at 3 Granville Circle in Zone 1. The Beautification Tree Advisory Board has selected Mr. George Hudson's and Ms. Kimberly Hannah of 2744 Ridge Road as the Residential Beautification Award winner for the month of April. They were also picked for the month of April in 2022, but Hurricane Ian had something to say about that. George and Kim have been residents in Daytona Beach on and off for the past 50 years and have resided at this address for three years. George and Kim take pride in creating their own landscape, adding to the beautification of their home. The type of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include Washington palms, lilies, asparagus fern, India hawthorn, blue days, aloe, and other palms. City Commissioner Monica Paris to present. And is Mr.? Huh? Are they here? I'm sorry. They're not here? I was hoping, I was hoping. Anyway, they're on my walk that I take through the neighborhood, and these guys are in the yard working all the time. Moving right along. Mayor Henry, members of the commission, and Mr. Fiecher. I still am Sharon Weatherholtz of 3 Granville Circle. Beautification and Tree Advisory Board has elected Beaches, which everybody, I'm sure, has seen at the corner of ISB and Peninsula. Thank you for the month of April. They also were chosen in October. What used to be an old gas station is now the Beaches Restaurant. Booze box, liquor store, wave wash, car wash, and they have been in business for Daytona for over a year. The types of tree and shrubs and plants used for beautification include robalini palms, bottle brush, croton, legustrum, which are kind of pedestrian, but they really put it together around the edges of the property to make it. It's hard with a commercial property with a parking lot, so they did a really good job. And here we have the manager and Tina. But we're there. And Mayor Henry is presenting.
All right. Certificate of Achievement. May it be known that this certificate has been presented to Beaches for distinguished achievement in commercial beautification, city of Daytona Beach, Florida. Signed by Commissioner Juanita May, Commissioner of Zone 3, and myself, Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of City of Daytona Beach. Thank you so kindly.
Thank you. If you guys haven't been there, I'll do my pitch now. Come support us.
And if you guys can face the dais, they'll take a picture.
If you want a good lunch, it's a great place to go.
Moving on to item 6B, the city manager's office, Omicron Epsilon Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity. A proclamation to be presented by.
Pride to Mayor Henry giving the proclamation to the men of Omicron Epsilon. I would like to recognize my intern. She's probably going to scream London Kelly. Would you please stand up? Stand up so they can see you. Yeah, I knew this was going to bother her. She does great work, but she's shy. I don't know why she's shy. She doesn't think she's going to get her hours, and I'm not as mean as she may tell people. But London will be a graduating senior, and her goals are to go to law school. So we wish her well, and I will be following her to make sure she does get into a good law school and she stays on track. But she's been doing survey work, really trying to focus on what can we keep our college students in Daytona Beach, as well as what will bring them back to Daytona Beach and why they leave. So thank you, London, because she may leave after the men of Omega Sci-Fi leave as well.
Mr. Manager, she's an intern from what institution of higher learning?
Cookman University.
I just want it on record.
Well, we would celebrate you no matter what institution you came from.
That's right.
But we give you a little extra. Hell, Wildcat. We would, I would like to say that nothing inspires me more than young people who are bringing their A-game to the table. When you're elected, as we are, and I think I speak for all of us, one of your chief objectives is to prepare for your community's posterity. And when young people are doing what they're supposed to do and beyond, it makes us feel good, whether we have anything to do with it or not, because it helps to secure our future. And so tonight, we are delighted to have the gentleman from Omicron Epsilon Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated, celebrating their 75th anniversary. Would you all please stand? I've been told by a reliable source that you all are the best of the best on the campus. When it comes to the tradition, the Greek tradition, you are representing yourselves and the institution well. And so if you would allow me to share this proclamation on your behalf. Whereas Monday, April 19, 1948, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity took Bethune-Cookman College, now university, by storm with the initiation of 21 young men exemplifying manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. The first modern Greek letter organization on campus would serve to change the Daytona Beach community and campus life thereafter. The following fall semester, November 22, 1948, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated upheld its stamp on this campus and community with the initiation of 28 young men into Omicron Epsilon Chapter Number 84, establishing the birth of a tradition which is continued throughout the chapter's existence. And whereas the founders of Omicron Epsilon Chapter were invited to teach on campus by the school's founder, Ms. Mary McLeod Bethune, these young scholars were initiated at other institutions during their undergraduate years. Reverend Rogers P. Fair, a graduate of Clark University, Atlanta, Georgia, was initiated at Beta Psi Chapter in 1944. Percy Milligan, a graduate of Loyola Merrimott University, Los Angeles, California, was initiated at Lambda Alpha Chapter in 1938. Edward Rodriguez and Bernard Smith are graduates of Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia, and were both initiated at Psi Chapter. And whereas throughout its 75 years of existence, Omicron Epsilon, commonly referred to as the Mighty OE, has produced several influential scholars, professionals, politicians, and athletes, which are attributed to the high standards and traditions one must entail in order to pass through the gates of Omicron Epsilon Chapter. From the chapter's beginning back in April, 1948, and the initiation of Omicron Epsilon Chapter Charter class in November of 1948, a tradition of molding mighty Omega men is instilled into each class and brother through the beliefs that lamp, lamps burning bright. Now therefore, I Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 19, 2023, as Omicron Epsilon Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated date. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the great city of Daytona Beach to be affixed this 19th day of April, 2023. Congratulations, gentlemen. Continue to march and walk in greatness, and we will continue to proudly host you as the host of Omicron Epsilon Chapter.
Mayor, he was the one that ran me down to get this done.
All right. That's what presidents do. They lead, they run, they work.
That's it.
All right. Would all of you like to come? Let us take a picture first, and then everyone, y'all come around.
Come around.
So y'all all come around.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number seven, which is citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on anything on the consent agenda. Our first speaker is Robert Burns, and on deck is Frederick Brown. And as you get to the podium, if you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Burns. I'm from 3640 General Marshall Road, Daytona Beach, Florida. It's a Hyridge Estates. I don't know how this works. So you address both things I put on here, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 8B, the funds for the coronavirus. I was just wondering, like, I'm all for education, all that stuff, but those funds should be used for everybody. I mean, we keep approving all this land and to be developed. Why not use that road to this money for roads and infrastructure? No? Why is that not a good idea? It says American Rescue Plan. It's for all Americans.
Well, I'm not going to use my donation for it, but you go ahead with your suggestion.
My tax money goes towards everything. All right? And this extra money could be used for not only four organizations, but for everyone. All right? No? It's America, American Rescue Plan money. All right. See how that goes. Then you got the development over by my house. You guys want, the last time this was brought up, you guys said that that road would only be used for emergency use only. Now they want to make it a permanent road and blow through the whole community. I don't understand why that happened. Maybe it's kind of like a house has to have a certain amount of exits. What are you referring to now, sir? The 9A and 9C. It's a small community back there, and now it's going to be developed. I understand, but it's just that now you're going to encroach on our neighborhood. And I understand that you have to, it's already done, so no matter what I say, doesn't matter. But the road doesn't need to go through there unless, you know, they said it was for emergency use only. Now they plan on, if you read their thing, that it's going to be permanent.
Okay.
Already last year during that storm, our neighborhood has been encroached on so much that the water has flooded in that area. People that lived there before said that's never happened before. All the development on LPGA around us has pushed that water surge towards us. So what is this development going to do for us as far as our community? Plus, I noticed today, one of your utility trucks that sucks all the sewage water out was pumping it into the canals that we have in our neighborhood for water. They rolled up General, not Colin Kelly, Roosevelt, went to the end and dumped it in the culvert. So are we going to get more of that, too?
Where do you live, sir?
3640 General Marshall Road, Daytona Beach, Florida, 32124, Hyridge Estates.
Is that?
That's just off of, what?
Oh, here's LPGA?
Yeah. No, no, no. Well, you go past LPGA, and then you.
Off of 92.
Yeah.
That's county. You live in the county?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Eric, here's my card. Give me a call, and I'll explain the COVID relief funds to you later and talk to you about this project, okay?
And Mr. Burns, you are signed up for item 9A, so when that item comes up, you can speak on that.
Oh, I didn't know that worked.
Okay. No worries.
It's okay. I'll talk to you later. Oh, you can give me a call. I'm sorry.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Yeah, and before I start my remarks, I can ask the clerk for clarifications. A whirlwind of amendments, changes, and whatnot, and I didn't get all the notes down. So which items were, was anything redacted? Okay. All right. I just heard a lot of things going on. Hi, Frederick Brown, 1508 Kristen Ridge, Daytona Beach. Welcome. Good to see you again. First thing I wanted, there's a number of items. I have seven items I want to discuss, and only three minutes are due, and so I have to talk fast. First thing, the donation that I'm seeing here for $60,000 by Mayor Henry, I thought that was removed, but I guess not. Anyway, I question that as far as the recovery fund. First of all, the city has lost a great deal of public land in this deal. And I understand that the benefits that we've gotten from Brown and Brown, but they are certainly not in need of recovery as much as many other organizations within the city. And that's a very large sum of money. I would like to see it dispersed in some other areas where recovery is really needed. I'm really dismayed at the loss of Manatee Island as a pet park in this whole transition. On item 8D, Madam Clerk, I may have left that off on my numerous notes there, but I want to speak very much in favor of 8D. Do you know it's been an absolute icon of the community and been a true friend of the veterans for many, many years, and it's the kind of thing we need to keep Daytona alive. 8F, I see it worth throwing another $200,000 almost for just a study only. And I don't understand why we're throwing more money at studies. Studies are great, but I would like to see the money more go towards action than studies. An item 8G, and the other ones are tied to Daisy Stocking. I miss this park. It's also being taken over by some homeless people living in there now. I would like to see it completed. I see in none of these contracts a solid date of completion. I used to run many projects, and I always had a Gantt chart to tell me where I was at on the project and where we are as far as completing on schedule. What happened with the Memorial Bridge, and I realize that's county, was a complete disaster, and we've had other projects that have gone way over term. I'd like to see it done on time. 8I, we're putting carpet in a flood zone. Why? That's a lot of money for four suites. I know they need it. I've been in the building, and I highly suggest that we get something more water resistant because as we're continuing to go in the city, until we make changes, it's going to flood again. And I just see that as throwing more good money after bad. Again, on, let's see, oh, 8A. I only have 18 seconds. My question is, are the contractors liable for damages? I don't see that in a contract. The previous contractor that did the landscape maintenance did a tremendous amount of damages in the parks, and I don't see them being held liable for the repairs. I would like to see that in the future contracts to ensure that they cover the damages they do. Thank you.
Our final speaker for the consent agenda is Mr. John Nicholson.
One item, 8F, two questions. It appeared to me when they redid the pavilion, the park, the Espaillonade, that when they raised the seawall, they raised it like three inches or four inches. So I'm wondering if we, when we do these seawalls, which is like 80% of the island, that we raise it higher than that? There's no sense in expecting the water to go over the top. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. It won't cost that much more to put it to a height that's functional. And secondly, from what I could gather from the information outside, it will encompass basically from the pavilion that is near where the pruing facility is, all the way around to where the library hits, the bridge. That area on the east side that we lost in the last hurricane. And for years, it comes up to almost the sidewalk, and so the palm trees' roots are showing. And we replace it, then it comes up and washes all away, and then we replace it, put sod down, and it gets washed away, and we replace it, and the water comes up, washes it away. And we've done this like nine times. And after the storm, we replaced it one day. I watched them, they replaced the sidewalk, about 10 feet of the sidewalk. They put the soil down, they put the grass down, and the next day, it was all gone. So it lasted approximately 20 hours. So I'm asking you to consider an undulating seawall along the eastern side and make a little beach out of it, so that people downtown, instead of having to go across the bridge to the beach, can walk to a little beach. And they can sit on the seawall. People can just sit on the seawall and watch the river. So it'd be multifunctional seawall so that we don't keep losing that and having to constantly replace it. Thank you.
That was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments about the consent agenda? All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
We do not.
Oh, there's no motion?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Take a motion from Commissioner Strickland, and I'll take a second from Commissioner Cantu. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is a growth management and planning department, Daytona Lakes RV Resort Voluntary Annexation. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance annexing into the city of Daytona Beach, land containing 179.73 plus or minus acres, generally located south of US 92, west of International Speedway Boulevard, and north of Interstate 4, east of Roosevelt Boulevard, and west of municipal boundary, redefining the territory boundaries of the city of Daytona Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 4 of the city of Daytona Beach to include the property, repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Reed. We have any questions or comments from speakers?
I do have Mr. Glenn Storch here for any questions, and then I do have speakers.
All right. No questions from Mr. Storch yet. All right, we'll hear from the speakers.
Okay. Our first speaker is Robert Burns, and on deck is George Flagler.
Sorry, I got you guys confused earlier. I was confused, too. My name is Robert Burns. I live in 3640 General Marshall Road, Daytona Beach, Florida, right there in Hyridge Estates. Like I was saying, that road was supposed to be emergency use only, the second road, and now it's proposed as just to go through. Roosevelt is already narrow, gets plenty of traffic from our community, let alone RVs coming up and down it. And like I said, like, what is our community going to benefit from it? It said that they had a certain amount of land. Now they have more land, and they're going to set some of that land aside for future use. Who's to say what that use will be for? It's just, they reduced the size of the RV lot to, from 22 feet to 12 feet, so now they're going to have even more RVs. Also, the other stay was only supposed to be 30 days. Now it's 210 days they're proposing. So who's to say that you don't go from one spot, 210 days, and then go to another spot? Now you're essentially just living there. What kind of people are we going to get in there? Is there going to be security? Just a lot of questions, you know? We live in a small community. It's been quiet all these years, and now all of a sudden, we're being encroached on. What are the benefits for us and safety?
Sir, who made that promise? You said you were promised that nothing would happen there.
They said that that road.
Who is they? The developers?
The developers. They said the last meeting that that road was only supposed to be emergency use only. Now, when you read. Now, when you read it, it says it's going to go from International all the way through to Roosevelt, and that's going to be a permanent road, in and out. And then they only had a certain amount of land before, now they have even more land. And after they develop what they need to do there, they're going to set that land to the side. Who knows what they're going to do with that? What do they do with all their waste also? How's that work? Do they just dump it in the ground? Do they go to off-site facility where they dump their RV waste? Are they just going to...you know, there's just a lot of questions about it. I don't know how an RV park works, so I don't know if there's anyone here from the company.
Well, their attorney's here, and he'll address some of your questions as it relates to how they do that. But there's protocols and procedures that the waste is properly disposed of.
All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is George Flagler, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
George Flagler, 4 Aspen Street, Daytona. I have four questions, pretty simple. I see that there's an addition onto the property, obviously. I'm wondering about entrances. Will there be an entrance on the Roosevelt in Aspen Street? And anywhere else on the Roosevelt? Will there be a restaurant and bar there on the premises? Will the tree line be destroyed bordering Roosevelt like on LPGA? And if it is, will you be putting a fence of some sort, and what kind?
We will have Mr. Storch answer some of those questions after all the speakers.
Okay.
He's the attorney.
All right. Want to talk to him, or?
No, no.
No, he'll get up.
We're going to let him talk after you're done, and...
Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is William Bedorf.
Frederick Brown, 1501 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. I had kind of lumped both 9A and B, obviously these things are all tied together. I have two concerns with this. Obviously, I've talked numerous times about the stormwater concerns, the stormwater will work its way all the way back up and around, but the other thing, of course, is the traffic. That whole intersection is going to end up getting to be as bad as the Taylor Road interchange down at 95 if we don't do something about it. It's already turning into quite a mess, especially on the days when the flea market is open. So we need to pay particular attention, and I don't know if the DOT is going to support this or not, but there's the two things that need to be addressed here are stormwater and traffic situations on this before we just go ahead and start building more things. Thank you.
Okay, and my next speaker is William Bedorf.
My name is William Bedorf, I live at 402 East International Speedway Boulevard. I forgot I could pick this thing up. You know, I wouldn't say I'm pro-development or against development, but I know that, I know the goal is to get the tax rolls up for fixing the flooding or helping our kids like you're doing now. And I respect all of you because the pressure you have on you, because you're going to please 50% of the people, and the other percent of the people are not going to be happy. In a generally...but if we don't do anything to bring the development in to Daytona, we're not going to be able to fix the problems we have in Daytona. So I'm glad that you all are here, and you all are the commissioners, and you're my mayor, and I know that you all know how to do this right. So you all are doing a great job, and I wish...I'm glad I thought I had a lot of stress with my job, and thank you all for doing a great job. Thank you.
And then I had Angela Applegate sign up to speak on 9A. I believe so.
Hello, my name is Angela Applegate, and I live at 1 Azalea Drive in Daytona Beach. It's actually High Ridge Estates. My house faces Roosevelt. When this original plan was talked about, there was emergency exits onto Roosevelt, but no actual traffic was supposed to be there. We're a small community, kids on the sidewalks, they don't even have sidewalks, so kids on the street, people walking their pets. We don't need Winnebago's, big trailers, big trucks, coming out there on our road to go to their park, wherever the park is, okay? They're supposed to have an entrance on 92, not on Roosevelt. There's no turnaround there, so if they come in, they either got to circle the block, or they're going to turn on somebody's yard. I kind of find that not acceptable. I don't think we're zoned for that. I know zoning is part of the changes, but I don't think it's supposed to take place in our neighborhood. Single-family dwellings, lots of kids and pets, having the park over to the right or to the east of us, not a problem. Don't mind that at all. Don't want them in the neighborhood. Don't want them using Roosevelt, it's not paved, it's not supported for that. We don't allow 18-wheelers in there, they don't weigh much more than big Winnebago's and everything, so I just don't think it should happen. I don't have a problem with the park, don't get me wrong. It's okay. I don't want it having access to our neighborhood. No turnaround, no entrance, emergency exit or emergency requirement was okay, so that shouldn't happen very often. But full-time use, no. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yes, very much so.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak.
Hi, I'm Jenny Nazak. First of all, I totally sympathize with the neighbors who don't want large Winnebago's constantly going into their neighborhood. Now, that said, I don't know how many of you all know this, but I moved from Austin, Texas, and I actually lived in an RV park for 10 years. Some people think, wait, an RV park's just for travelers, but there are some that people live in. And now, the same with lots of other things, a lot of people thought we were trailer trash because we were living in an RV park. But actually, there were just workers, retirees, people on disability, people trying to get through the day, people who didn't want a whole house to clean, new divorcees, just people, just people. And I can't presume to tell the neighborhood how to vote or whatever, but I will say, if it was my neighborhood, I'd rather have permanent residents who you could get to know than transient people coming in and out. That would generate more traffic, like more different Winnebago's each day or something. And our, the park that we lived in, most of us stayed there for like 10, 15, one guy had been there for 40 years. Why? Because it was a low-cost, stable place that we could be. And, you know, a lot of us had different types of occupations, lower-paying occupations, freelance occupations. There was a guy who was a Renaissance Fest knife thrower, there were baristas, there were, you know, welders, and there was me, eco educator, and just a bunch of different people, not bad people, not trash. I will also say that these, the RV sites are very small, so people don't have big yards, so people aren't constantly driving to Home Depot or whatever, and people aren't constantly having these big landscaping trucks trundling in and out. So there's just always something, there is always something. But I do sympathize with people who don't want constant use of that road into their neighborhood, and that seems like something that should be able to be figured out. Thank you all.
Thank you.
That was my final speaker on 9A.
Mayor, let me remind everyone that there are three items related to this development. This first item is for annexation. The standard for annexation is quite different than it is for adoption of the comp plan or of the PD. So with Mr. Storch's approval, if we could have the public comment apply to all three items, that way they wouldn't have to come up again, these are all public hearings, so otherwise that would be required.
If it'd be okay, then could I also do my presentation for all three?
I did have individuals sign up for 9B, so...
That'd be my suggestion.
9B can come up at the same time, come up now.
Okay.
And then what we'll do is we'll approve 9A, and then, because 9A is different.
We'll just take a separate vote on each one after we hear all of the comment on all three.
Okay. So my next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and Mr. Brown had also signed up for 9B.
Good evening, Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I attended the developer-initiated meeting for this project, and I was very impressed by it. I think some people have a mistaken impression, this is a high-end RV park. There was no proposal that these RVs will be coming through the neighborhood unless it's an emergency situation. Everyone in Daytona Beach, it seems, thinks that anytime anything is developed, we will be sending water their way. I understand the impetus for that because of the way that we've had so much flooding, but all of these new projects require that all of the water that's on that site be engineered to stay on that site, so it is not an option for that water to overflow. And we have great staff, and they take into account those kind of rules when they look at the plans that are put before them. The 210 days, I think that at the end that this park is at, I certainly couldn't afford to stay there for 210 days, there won't be many of us who can. It is a resort park, it's lovely, it'll be a great addition, it will help take up some of the overflow that we have so that we don't have people parking perhaps at the unimproved lot on the intersection of A1A and the Speedway, but instead, they can find a nicer, more appropriate place to park their RVs. And when you're traveling by RV, you do not set up your camp and then go back and forth and back and forth. It's really a very low-traffic entity compared to the number of slots that you have. So overall, I think this is a very good project, they preserved a lot of green space, I think it'll be good for the community, and I think they're doing it in a very responsible way. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Brown, you're going to address 9B?
Frederick Brown, 1501 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. And I've spoken numerous times on the flood conditions, and it's obvious that old standards need to be changed. When you have 20 or 22 inches of rain, it's not going to all stay in the property unless you're building massive walls around on a huge lake and flooding everybody in it. And I want to remind the commission that every time you replace an open space with a roof, a pavement, paved pad, et cetera, and you're upping this to 1,200 pads now, and I agree with Sandy, nice development design, the problem is, you got to think the consequences down the road. You need to think the consequences of the traffic issues, you need to think the consequences of the flooding issues. Because every time you put, every square foot of roof and pad that you put on this piece of property, that is that much drainage taken away. And by using the old standards of flooding, which we are in all these developments, in all these 100-year plans and 500-year flood plans, and all the other things that we've gone by the standards, and for those of you who just went to the recent presentation by Dr. Young last week, he stated very clearly, times have changed. The waters are rising, the groundwater, he was very strong about addressing that, which means the drainage isn't going to be as good. And then all that water's eventually going to end up somewhere, and it will end up east to Daytona, because if you study the civil layout of the land, it all's going to end up flowing up into the Halifax and then coming right back down onto Daytona Beach. So it's not a problem that's going to go away. We need to think about it. We need to design, redesign by design, as Henk Oveink would say. And I sure hope that more of you have actually had a chance to review that video that I've talked about numerous times. You really need to start thinking about the future now, not before it's too late, and that's what we tend to do here. When all the problems pop up, long after we may be gone, there's problems that are going to be there. So let's try to solve this at the same time. You know, we've got, as Sandy said, I agree with her, it's nice to have a high-end development, but the traffic's already a lot, there's a lot of issues in that part of town, and I don't see it getting any better yet. And I saw what happened down on Taylor Road over the years, and it's gotten to be where that's a very expensive type of repair. So I just don't want to see that happening here, and I don't want to see the citizens of Daytona get more floodwater. Thank you.
And our next speaker is Ann Ruby.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I also attended the DIMM on this, and as I recall, Roosevelt Road access was only for emergency vehicles. So I hope Mr. Storch can clear that up, maybe my memory's faulty on that. I was very excited, I am very excited about this project, because one of the big problems I see with our Bike Week issues, are RVs parked all over our residential neighborhoods on the mainland and on the beachside. And I think this RV park resort could be a great solution to that, that we could phase that out as a neighborhood use and have people park at a place like this, make reservations for an RV resort. I think this could be a win-win for a lot of reasons, but that's the reason I was the most excited about it, was that we need to find a space. We can't just say, you can't park RVs in the older neighborhoods like they've always been. We need to find a place for them to park. This would be a great place. Thank you.
All right, that's it. Mr. Storch?
Thank you. Well, first of all, as to annexation...
Hold it, Mr. Storch.
Okay.
You're not on this one, or you didn't want to speak on this one, did you?
Okay.
Okay.
First of all, for the record, my name is Glenn Storch, and I should point out, the gentleman indicated there's consequences of approving development, there's consequences of not approving good development also, because it turns out to be you have something that you don't want. And so in this particular case, if you don't annex this piece, it goes, it stays in the county. It stays in the county. The county currently has a comp plan that allows for 329 homes on this site and over 100,000 square feet of commercial on this site. The site would only allow, right now, access off of Roosevelt. So if this was developed in the county, you would have access on Roosevelt. The way we're doing it now, we're connecting it to our piece, so it will all have access through to International Boulevard and to a signal at International Boulevard. And by the way, we did talk about the fact, I, you know, it's really important to me when I'm talking to neighbors, that I clarify and I want to understand what their concerns are, because I do not want to do anything that impacts their community in any way other than positively. And so in this particular case, one of the issues they had, of course, was Roosevelt. We are required, under the city's standards, to have one additional access point for every 20 acres. We've asked for a waiver for that. We've got to a point, we have our major access on International Speedway, as you can imagine, and that's where everybody's going to be checking in, checking out. That's why it has to be that logical place. We're not going to have people going willy-nilly any other place, they're not going to be coming in from Roosevelt or going out on Roosevelt. That would defeat the purpose of a commercial use, because we need to know who's in here and who's out. So Roosevelt was required as a second access by staff, but it'll be gated. And so the intent is, it'll be a paved access, yes, but it will be gated, and the intent is not to use it because everybody will be using the signaled, signalized access on International Speedway Boulevard. So hopefully, that will resolve many of the community's concerns. But again, like I say, when I'm looking at these things, I was looking at it as a balancing test, because it's not like, oh, you're going to keep it exactly as it is. It's going to be either this or this. And in this case, you can have it where you, if you go with the county, you're going to have access on Roosevelt, it's that simple. If you go with the city, then we can do something really special and something we've worked very hard to preserve areas and to do this really right. And so some of the things I can talk about is, let's go ahead and start with the beginning.
Explain that again, I know what you're saying. Most of these residents out here are county residents.
Yes, they are.
So what, can you explain that to them again, because I don't think a lot of them understand? We're annexing the... We're annexing the property over to Daytona, so they're actually getting a better deal than what they would be.
Oh, far, far better.
Correct.
If your concern is access on Roosevelt, if your concern is traffic on Roosevelt, if your concern is how this impacts your neighborhood, this is the way to do it and the way we have planned it as a planned unit development. So we have massive amounts of buffer, so we have minimal numbers of access, one, but it'll be gated. And so it's a community that will work together with you. And I've listened to those people. I enjoyed, as Ann and everyone else will tell you, I enjoy that neighborhood meeting. I enjoyed meeting these people, and I enjoyed listening to them, and I enjoyed finding solutions that we incorporated into our agreement. So hopefully we did the right thing. But I'll go into that. So let's go ahead and start. So this is an annexation, I guess I'll do this. This is an annexation of 180 acres into the city. There's retention, the nice thing about this one is there's retention areas that were created as part of the I-95 expansion. When they built the I-95 expansion, they had to have fill. And so these lakes were built as part of that. So we're gonna now use these lakes both for stormwater retention and for amenities for the RV park. So that's the nice thing. In addition, I know there was an issue as far as traffic. Some people were concerned about traffic. There's an agreement now with the county, the city, and DOT for, to realign and rebuild the I-4 exit. We're donating a piece of our land to make that happen. So all of that, you're gonna have another access point, a better access point at I-95 or I-4 and International Speedway. So that's the improvements we're doing. On top of that, we're also providing a, we have a cost-share agreement that we're working on right now, where we'll have a new traffic signal right there at the entrance to this provision. So all those things are things we've done to eliminate and alleviate traffic. So as I said, right now, under your county comp plan, right now as it is, you can, under the county comp plan, you can build 329 single-family homes, 108,000 square feet of commercial, and your access has to be on Roosevelt. Because if you're building that project, you're not coming through the RV park. Because that would defeat the purpose of the RV park. That RV park is a resort. And when it's, you're not gonna have traffic going through a resort. There's never gonna be traffic through, going through this resort. There's gonna be traffic going into this commercial area and going out of this commercial area, and that's it. One of the other things we've done for traffic, though, is that we're providing shuttle services. So when people do come in here and park, we're gonna provide some, we have some small buses and things like this that we're gonna provide shuttle services to events, to the mall, things like this, to again, reduce traffic. And that's a great thing. You need an RV park. You need a first-rate RV park. We're doing one here anyway. And we're just expanding the one we're doing, partially based on what we did with the lakes. It just seemed like a better way to do it. Now, by doing that, oh, I'm sorry. So we're annexing, and then you have to amend the comp plan. We're amending the comp plan, and we're doing this. We're limiting this comprehensive plan designation to either 720 RV units or one unit per acre. So we're actually reducing, if this ever goes back to residential, we're reducing the residential uses of the property and reducing the density, if this does not get built as a RV park. The, let's see here. We already have an RV park approved, as you know. This is the RV park right here. This approved on International Speedway. This is Daytona Lakes RV Resort. This is approved. I have all the entitlements for it, 490 units right now, and that's where your access is gonna be and where it's gonna go through. And then these are some of the things that we're already planning for this entire RV resort. An activity center, welcome centers, bathhouses. It's gonna be a really nice place to come and stay and, but more importantly, as a launching pad to then go and see the attractions and fun of Daytona Beach. What we're adding is the piece that we've talked about, and that piece is the ones at the top. And that will actually take work around the lakes, but I want you to look what we're doing. Look at the amount of land that we're preserving. Look at the amount of trees that we're preserving on this site. So we're having, we're adding 720 additional RV spaces and outdoor storage is necessary, but with the same quality standards as the original, because it's part of the original RV park. So this is the amount we're actually preserving. All of, that's the first one. All of that's being preserved. And this is the one we're going for now, and this is all preserved. And I want you to look at the buffer between Roosevelt and what you're looking at, where the actual RV spaces will be. There are several hundred feet of vegetated buffer between Roosevelt itself and any uses on this site. You're never gonna get that anywhere else. When we talked about the fact this is a better deal than you're gonna get in the county, because the county would allow you to build residential right next to residential. The county would allow a commercial with perhaps a wall or something. But in our case, this is all vegetated buffer that we're preserving and we're using as an amenity for the park itself. So that's one of the things we're doing. That's, some of the other amenities we're talking about is the clubhouse, the activity center, pedestrian and golf cart friendly design. People oftentimes bring golf carts where there's charging stations for them. 24-hour security, shuttle service. One of the things that was asked was, oh, well, we're gonna have these people coming in, by the way, in usually 150 to $200,000 RVs that they're scooting around in, can we trust them? Well, you know, there was a question on whether or not I could do a background check on anyone who comes in. I can't do it on a daily basis. You know, when they first, when they arrive at night, you can't do a background check before you let them in. But I did put a provision in, we have agreed to do a background check after a week. If they've been there a week, we do a background check. So just to alleviate any concerns the neighborhood may have, we did that. They're not gonna be staying six or eight months. It's possible they may. They're allowed to. They are not allowed to stay anymore. They're not allowed to stay by moving slots. They're not allowed to stay by moving spaces, because that puts us into a different category and a different tax category, and we can't do that. So this is a commercial RV park. And by the way, by booing this, by doing it as commercial, you have full taxes on this. There's no homestead. There's no residential. This is taxed as a commercial activity. And my understanding is that this is a $75 to $90 million investment on this site that you'll be getting. All right, so there's, what we're saving and what we're showing on this section here is we have 58 acres of lakes. Really nice-looking lakes, by the way, they turned out to be. When the lakes were built, they were built in such a way where you had really great shorelines and vegetation. We'll be using, they'll be used by the guests for canoeing, fishing, other activities. I don't know about swimming. I know that was put in there, but I don't know that's the case. Swimming is more dangerous. So there'll be an extensive trail system around the lakes for nature walks and exercise, again, to give them a feeling of living in a, or being in a resort, because that's what they're paying for. They're gonna be paying quite a bit. On the entire site, I have set aside 44% of the site for conservation, for natural conservation. There's an additional, there's an additional 58 acres of lakes. So of the total 270 acres on this, 61% of the site will be undeveloped. You tell me that you'll get a better deal in the county with that. This is a great deal for the citizens. It'll be a great deal for the people who come to stay here, because they'll feel like they're in nature, and that's what they're paying for. But at the same time, they're literally within a shuttle bus distance to Daytona and its attractions. You know, it's the best of all possible worlds. We talked about the large preservation areas that we provided between the resort and the neighbors. The borrow pits are used for stormwater. There's more than excess capacity in those stormwater ponds at this point. Just massive amounts. Is that right? That's what I thought. That's my engineer. The project also allows for utility extensions to this area. I don't know if you know this, but this neighborhood really doesn't have utilities, and that's a problem. And so that is an issue. As a result of this and another project, we'll be bringing utilities all the way out International Speedway to this area. And that's really big. That's really important. There's not gonna be any subty tanks on the site. The new traffic light and the right turns lanes will increase safety. The 600-foot trip, there's a, based on the change in the land use alone, we have reduced traffic generation by 77% from what the county was to what we are. That's what we're doing. The entrance on Roosevelt is only used for emergency, and when I say it's, it'll be built as though it's a full-scale road, because it's required by the city, but they'll have a gate across it. The gate, of course, will be accessible at any time for emergency vehicles. If there was a fire or something like this, we'd, of course, be opening it. But generally, everyone will be going in and out that one entrance. It's new jobs. It's a tax base for the city. We made changes to the PD to accommodate the neighbors, because I listened to them. I tried to, at least. So the construction traffic, we also put a provision that only, the construction traffic is only allowed to access from US 92. Construction traffic is not allowed to access via Roosevelt. That's important. There was limitation on campfires. We've talked about the buffers. We've talked about the limited gate access. Will background check guests, and no residential permitted. No one will be allowed to live there. We have a staff recommendation of approval. The future land use is consistent with the new neighborhood policy. It's consistent with the comp plan. This reduces entitled density. It provides for a huge commercial tax base. I think we've done, this is a home run. I think it's a home run for the city. I think it's a home run for the area, and it will be something that we can all be proud of as time goes on. And with any luck, the residents in Daytona High Ridge won't even know it's there, because that's the goal here. So I've done my best. Is there any questions whatsoever? Again, the engineer is here. We can ask if you have any questions. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have any other comments or questions? None?
I just have comments. All of the RV parks that have been brought to Daytona Beach, if you go on Google, they have like a rating of 4.3 or higher. So I trust that staff has looked everything over and feels that it'd be a good fit for our city, and we do need, we do have a need for this. I hope Mr. Storch answered everyone's questions, and that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have a motion. We have a second. We have any questions? Any other questions come? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to nine B, which is the second part of this, is the Growth Management and Planning Department, Daytona Lakes RV Resort, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting large-scale comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida Statute, amending the future land use map designation of 179.8-plus acres of property located south of US 92 West International Speedway Boulevard and east of Roosevelt Boulevard, north of the Interstate 4 corridor, and west of the access ramp for the Interstate 4 at US 92 International Speedway Boulevard, from Volusia County Low-Impact Urban and Urban Low-Intensity to City Mixed Use, amending future land use element neighborhood V development policy to limit development intensity for the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to nine C. It's the Growth Management and Planning Department, First Amendment to the Daytona Lakes RV Resort PD. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the lands of Elm Co., to rezone 179.7-plus or minus acres of property generally located southwest, generally located in the southwest quadrant of the I-4 and US 92 West International Speedway Boulevard intersection between US 92 and I-4 from Volusia County A2A VC Rural Agriculture Activity Center to PDG Plan Development General, approving the first amended and restated Daytona Lakes RV Resort Plan District Agreement to incorporate the property being rezoned into the planned district, increase the number of permitted RV sites, and modify development standards and phasing plan for the RV resort, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Khan, two, and a second from Commissioner Strickland. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, here are none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Okay. Thank you. I think it's a good one.
Moving on to item 9D. It's the Public Works Department, approval of the preliminary and final plat for Halifax Hospital Medical Center Phase II. This is a resolution, public hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for the Halifax Medical Center Phase II located on west side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, approximately 1,500 feet north of Halifax Medical Center Drive, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation there upon meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date.
Got a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed.
I do have Arrow McCann here, on behalf of the applicant, for any questions.
No questions. All right, no questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
And for the record, there were no other additional speakers.
Okay. All right.
And that was our final agenda item.
All right, we'll move on to commission comments. We'll commence with Commissioner Reed, Zone 6.
Yes, sir. Let me just say that on yesterday, I had the privilege of being the keynote speaker for the State Conference of Habitat for Humanity. You can see I gave them a donation tonight. I also, my department, Edinburgh Riddle, actually went and stuffed and prepared for the mutt strut last week, and then Weston and I were the grand marshals for the mutt strut this past weekend. So I really enjoyed that, to see the citizens and their animals there. Oh, I just combined two things, didn't I? Did I mess you up? Because I messed myself up. Okay. The mutt strut was for Humane Society. Good gosh. It's been a long day. For the Humane Society, for Weston and I, but then for Habitat. I was their keynote speaker yesterday. And it just gave me great pleasure. As you know, I have a partnership with them for the homes in my zone that are being roofed. And it was a pleasure to address and to share with those around the state that we recognize that it's difficult to get materials and what have you now, but you've gotta think outside of the box. In fact, I encourage them to get out of the box in regards to still trying to help the citizenry in their various cities. Several last week threw the first pitch for games. I know we heard from the manager and the mayor the week prior, but Commissioners May and Strickland and Cantu and I were there the same night, and I don't, everybody's ball didn't make it to the plate. I won't say whose didn't, but mine did. I had to do a, I did a softball underhand throw, but it made it. That's what girls do, underhand throw. Yes. And it made it. And then, in closing, I just would like for us to just pause for a moment, because we lost one of our lights this past weekend, the service for Freddie Moore, who was the first African-American female city commissioner who sat in my seat after her husband was the commissioner, Andrew Moore. She ran in his place and was his predecessor. And then she was also the first African-American county councilwoman, and her service will be this Saturday at 11:00 p.m., 11:00 a.m. at Mount Bethel Baptist Institutional Church. And yes, she was also a woman of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Both of my predecessors that were women. There are three Deltas have sat in this seat. The commissioner prior to me, Commissioner Reynolds, was also a Delta. And, but Freddie Moore was something special. 95, 96 years old, standing strong. That's that old guard. So now we're becoming the old guard. We're the ones now that are gonna have to be responsible and have to answer for the children that come after us. We're those children that came after them. And she'll be greatly missed. She'll be greatly missed.
Yes, she will.
Yes, sir. So we're going to, I know, do something in regards from the city, since she was one of our own.
Yeah, absolutely. Beautiful. Now, Commissioner Parrish?
I just want to let everyone know, there's a job fair for teens that's gonna be hosted by the Volusia County Schools, ages 16 to 18. It's on April 27th from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Mayland High School. And then there's gonna be one on May 1st, 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at University High School in Orange City. I don't really have much to say, but I just wanted to bring up about the contracts with the landscapers, because I know a lot of people are upset that the landscapers ruined some of the vegetation. But it is in Exhibit A, so this was 8J. I know it's a little late, but I knew I saw it. And it's under contractor's responsibility, so the responsibility is under the contractor if something happens to the vegetation and the property. I guess that's all I have for today. Thank you. Thank you.
I would add that same contract has substantial insurance requirements and indemnification requirements as well.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I got you. Do you have a flyer from what you read earlier? May I see it and take a picture of it? Is that okay? Thank you. Oh, hmm? I, I don't, I don't have this. I don't remember that. But Commissioner, what's in the, sorry, Commissioner Strickland?
Just hope to see everybody at the parade tomorrow. That's all I have.
That's right, brother. Permission to make?
Really appreciated being at the baseball game. And then right after, went over to the Blue and Gold Gala at Emory Riddle, saw a lot of community representation. Students at Emory Riddle are making us very proud there. To that, I will add that this evening, the electric vehicle kids are actually going to be at Campbell High Middle School. I wanted to be there, but it only goes from 6 o'clock till 8 o'clock this evening. So it's a collaboration between Bethune-Cookman students, along with the Riddle students, working on an electric vehicle project. And again, I'm hoping to bring them here, most likely in the fall semester when they come back to school. Also, I'd like to say a big thank you to fellow students over at Sigma Chi, and they are the gentlemen of Sigma Chi. And they actually helped out this past weekend with the beautification on MMB. And they are located, their frat house is located on Ridgewood, very close to City Hall. I have a good relationship with them. So I wanted to say thank you very much for helping the city. And I hope that they'll be more prominent. And I'm hoping that both groups will be attending city commission meetings. I'd like to see them here. So thank you very much.
Pass that around. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Khan, too?
Yes, I just had one thing. When we had an agenda review, the boards for the Police Advisory Board, all of the applicants are up for renewal. What are we going to do about that? Because originally, I know two of the commissioners weren't here, that we had so many applications and they were zone Pacific. Oh, well, it wasn't zone Pacific, but we did a zone Pacific. So how are we going to reappoint or reappoint new people on that board?
This is what I recommend now, because the person who has resigned and they have is, 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 was my appointee, I don't know if others have ever resigned. I think it should be by zone so that we all just appoint someone. And that's the way, that was the impression.
I agree.
That I was under, that we were just appointing someone. And so that's what I would want to do, to make it like some of our other appointments.
I agree. I have two applications in my zone right now. And that's what I wanted to find out, if we can get this on the agenda.
The, the ordinance was adopted, that was adopted was for general appointments. It wasn't a zone appointment. As I recall, you know, when that item came forward, there were so many applicants. It was the decision of this commission to limit the applicants by having each commissioner recommend or nominate someone from their zone. But the way the ordinance is drafted, you'd have to amend it in order to have and provide for zone appointments.
Well, what I, I would say is they don't have to necessarily be in the, live in the zone that you represent. Maybe they should just live in the city and each one of us have one appointment. That way it's, that way we have an opportunity to keep it, you know, in the way that we originally hoped that it would be, which is sort of diverse and eclectic from across the community. Is, is that reasonable?
It's reasonable. It's still require an amendment to the ordinance. And I think the other thing to be aware of is that the ordinance requires that a certain number of members, I believe it's four of the seven, have to have some experience in, in law enforcement, the military, you know, related to police work. So your zone appointments would also have to reflect that makeup as well. So that would be a consideration.
So then that would just simply mean that if one of us had an appointment and it didn't meet that requirement, that appointment would have to meet that requirement?
Correct.
If we fell underneath the threshold?
Correct.
Okay. So I would ask the staff bring back, you know, an amendment if we're all in agreement. Is there any obstinance to that?
Okay. So we'll draft it up as a nomination to be confirmed by the commission from the zone commissioner.
And that would be the next commission meeting?
Yes. At that same time, could we also do the appointments later? Because that's what Commissioner Khan, too, has been trying to get this.
Correct. I have two right now.
So could we do that later in the meeting?
Oh, does it have to be at the same meeting?
I mean, she wants it.
I can do it now?
No, I'm saying after that.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Oh, oh, she's ready to, she's ready to move.
I'm ready. They've been ready, so.
Okay. All right.
So we have two readings, of course, of an ordinance. So it'll take two meeting cycles.
Okay.
Okay. Now, my final question to you, Mayor, for this form for the city manager, it'll be two years in June. Where is this form coming from? I guess you were going to draft a new one?
We have several different forms. I will share them with you all. Is there something that you want to?
Okay.
See ahead of time?
Oh.
I'll share the forms that I was thinking of.
You want to see it ahead of time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. And that's it. And I will see y'all tomorrow at the parade.
Okay, great. Commissioner Henry?
Looking forward to seeing everyone at the parade tomorrow. And that concludes my comments.
All right. Gentlemen, talked about the park. It's a park. And it's a park, and it's a pavilion. And it is, each pavilion would be $180,000. So I was hoping that we would get more money from here because it's a permanent structure in the park. And one of our chief agendas, we, we just approved tonight, $2.2 million for Daisy Stockin. And I don't know if we realize what a big deal that is, but we will once that park is redone. And I am hoping that we would be known for our parks. And I think that we're taking giant steps to that end. So I, while I do realize that Mr. Brown has been rated as a, you know, or acknowledged as a billionaire, and, but that's, his, his money is, is not the city's money. And the park still belongs to the city. So I believe that this is totally an appropriate use. And this was something that I asked for years ago, you know, wanted a pavilion to be a part of this facility. Now, we remember how nice the Christmas lights were in the park. Some of us will remember how wonderful the youth entrepreneurs were in the park. I was there two weeks ago for the art festival, which was wonderful, in the park. I think we want to see the park activated year-round for everybody, and we don't want people to be burning up in the park. Now, you know, if someone wants to complain that a man who spent almost $35 million on the park, and then because we appropriate some funds to build something that will be there even after the 50-year lease, that's their complaint. I believe this is an appropriate and superb use of ARCA funds, and I support them. And anyone who wants to begrudge expenditures of ARCA funds on youth, you know, I have other words for them that I won't use if this dies. Because I'm going to use the funds for youth because I don't think anyone has been more impacted by COVID than young people, other than the people who lost their lives and people who may have lost family members. But I see the effects of that, and I see the effects of it on a daily basis. So I will continue to use funds on that, for that cause. Final thing is, I posted about the LD, the containers, which I believe will be a part of the housing fair on the end of the month, which I regret that I will not be able to attend, which also means that I'll miss the seafood. Tell me about it. That makes me really sad. My taste buds are regretting that. But nevertheless, we, we've all seen or heard of the container homes. And what I would like for staff to do is to bring us back some options for some LDC opportunities that we might be able to consider to be able to use those. They could even be something that we could use as an accessory dwelling unit. I've thought about places, if you own a parcel, maybe that could be an option. But just bring us back some options that we could then discuss as a commission. No rush to judgment or decision. But I toured and fell in love with it as a, as a possibility. But there are many possibilities that I think will, for affordable housing that I'm in love with. This is just one, but I would like for that to be something that you all would. Is there any obstinance or disagreement with that, or do we have agreement?
What I would like to see possibly is a checklist of, we have certain workforce or affordable provisions, discounts, and or ways you can help. I'd like to see a checklist that says, given that you're doing a container home, this is what you're eligible for. This is what you can request to help lower the cost of getting the land ready of the infrastructure needs. And I'll see if we can really consider the types of surfacing that we're using in terms of the roadways or the entryways to make it permeable as well. I think that'll be great. It'll also help reduce the overall cost of the product. I'm glad you like it. I'm glad you like it. I'm glad you like it.
I walked away just like, yeah, I'm ready to roll. You know, yeah.
I was thinking, that's dangerous, isn't it? That maybe we could use, I heard that, Paula. Maybe we could use these things for, for infill. And the reason I was thinking for infill, when I toured, the gentleman said they could be put up on a pole or whatever, off the ground. Because infill now, from what I've observed, is that we have to, to meet current standards, we have to fill in dirt. And then we put in a, a house, so the water runs off the roof. And so then it will flood over onto the neighbors because that property has been razed. So if we could come up with something where we could put those in there, in, in neighborhoods as infill, as, as you saw, you can put a facade on it and make it match the neighborhood. And, and I think it would, it would serve us to look at that because the more infill we put in there, the more dirt we put, the water's got to go somewhere. And I don't think the neighbors are looking forward to it coming to their yard. If, if staff could look at that, maybe we could change some of our, our ordinances or codes or whatever to accommodate that in the future. I don't know if that's possible or not, but it seems to me it's, it could be. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and because they're stackable, so, you know, which I think is, is an important part of things in terms of the numbers that you could get in. And I, I want to see more density. I know that we, we're trying to run away and, away from the flood-prone areas, but I don't really want to see the flood-prone areas not have people living in them. So if, if they could be raised, like you say, I think that's a good.
I'm also aware of the fact that certain zones, I believe, are of certain requirements for square footage. Could we also stipulate what those are? And if we're willing to bend those a little bit to reduce?
That's a part of the LDC.
You see, yeah.
Things that they would be looking at. Yeah. Because we're going to have to have discussions. Because everybody's not going to, you know, be happy with the idea. Okay? All right. Thank you. And then the final thing is, tomorrow at 6 o'clock is the much-awaited parade. And I don't have my blue and gold tie tonight. And tomorrow, we will, I think, have a really good time of celebrating some true, true champions in our communities, in our community, who have given us cause to celebrate. So let's all come and have a good time. And if you're in Daytona Beach, show up. If you graduated in 1976 and you high-jumped over seven feet, show up. So yeah, you don't need to look around, Mr. Birch. You know, there's a lot of reasons for Mayland High School people and Seabreeze High School people and Atlantic High School, for all of us in Daytona Beach, to show up. And also gives us an opportunity to showcase the beauty of downtown. The, the beauty of, you know, the esplanade and what I believe in, in Dr. Bethune's statue. All reasons for that area to be our centering point. You know, the parade is in the right location because we want to, you know, when we have issues and situations. Had a gentleman who passed away just recently, and he always gave away hundreds of bikes each year. Well, he wanted to give away his bikes this year at Dr. Bethune's statue. And I thought, wow. I'm feeling kind of rough that he's, he's passed away and won't be able to do that. But if, if that carries on, that's something that I'd like to support because, you know, I think that statue downtown, just so many good things and good vibes that we should be receiving from that area. And I want everyone to come. So at any rate, that concludes my remarks. Mr. Manager, did you have anything?
Yes, I have two items. First item, I do. First item, I do have two. I want to say is that the mayor, I'm surprised he didn't say anything. I'm honored. But he, the, the mayor, myself, and the police chief throughout the ceremonial pitches, and I got to give the mayor credit. He practiced probably for two weeks with a professional trainer. Because if there would, there would have been a pro up there swinging the bat, they would have struck out. He did very well. I, I give that to him. And I told the police chief, I said, listen, we work under the direction of the mayor. If my ball bounces, yours better bounce so the mayor can get all the credit. Y'all know I had to come. But no, he did, he did very well in both. The chief and I, our balls bounced. He did do a public records request to get the camera footage from the stadium. I made sure that our technology people had no access to the camera footage from that evening's event. But also, many of you have received numerous emails and calls about the Streamline Hotel Rooftop Bar. Mr. Morris and his team have been meeting today, and I wanted them to provide you all with a update on where we are based off the information that you have received over the weekend, and also information we've worked with, with different entities within the city. So I wanted to bring that report to you. So you have it.
Before Jim Morris speaks, let me correct the record. I have thrown the first pitch out six, seven times. Maybe eight. I've never thrown a ball. Balls and strikes in baseball. Every year, strike. Had an injured finger. Worked, worked, stuck it in the window. Window came down, crashed. I showed this to the manager and the chief, and they told me, we don't want any excuses. Now, that's what the manager and the chief said, especially the manager. Well, I said, I don't offer excuses. You're going to see a strike. Well, I delivered, and he was accurate in everything that he said, with the exception of what he told our police chief. He said, I work for the mayor. You work for me. If I throw a ball and I hit the dirt, you better hit the dirt. Our poor chief. Bold and bad, fearless in the face of crime. Running after bullets. Unfortunately, his job was on the line, so the brother threw a ball. In the dirt. Mr. Morris. It's all out of love.
Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager, what a bad place to stand on the agenda, following that story. Commission, I've given you a package of materials that pertains to the Streamline and the Rooftop Bar. As you may know, the Streamline changed ownership in March. The Hennessy family sold their interest, and a new group purchased the property. One of the representatives of the ownership, Mr. Greg Kong, is here with us this evening. And I did see the emails, some that were addressed and copied to me, some that were not, as well as videos and other things. So I put together a package of materials for you to take a look at. I would say to you two that I met today with both Code and the Police Department to go through issues that both have seen in enforcing the ordinance, and also provide some history to you in relation to the Streamline under the Hennessy ownership and then under the new ownership. New ownership is getting licensed with the city to operate the property, which all of you know is a historic property and has been there for many, many years. What you have in page one is the application initially filed by Eddie Hennessy. There were multiples because the permits expire every six months. Part of the permit application process is that you draw a diagram to show how the speakers you have will be placed for outside amplification. And I should emphasize that the permit is for outside amplification due to the fact that you've got speakers outside, unshielded, there are hours of operation, there are decibel there are hours of operation, there are decibel operation standards, and also orientation standards to make sure that speakers face away from developed areas or populated areas with residential use. So page two of the materials I've given to you, which is in blue and red, that's the application filed by Eddie Hennessy. And the red triangle arrow looking things are speakers, and their orientation shows being angled along the walls, facing towards A1A. And that is an application that while Mr. Hennessy filed it, he never seemed to honor that. The speakers were decrepit and old. And on page three, you'll see speakers the way Mr. Hennessy operated them, which was not the way it was permitted to be done. And there were numerous citations and visits by the Police Department and Code. In the instance that I show here, and I know it's not the only instance that it occurred, was the way Hennessy did things. He took regular PAs, the DJ operation, put speakers that weren't his, or the DJs, they owned, the DJs owned the speakers, put them on stands above that rail, which that rail has glass, plexiglass there, and then you see the walls. But that's the way the Hennessy did that over and over again. And, you know, you mentioned Seafood Festival tonight. Commissioner Reed, I think about the volume that you have, the DJ, during the Fish Festival. And I know I go the other way around, because I can't hear anything when I'm there. And certainly, it's a loud, unpleasant noise. And that's enough noise to disturb any neighborhood night after night. But that was the way that Hennessy did his business. The new owners have filed an application, and that's the next page. And you see the application looks very much the same. But if you look, there is some bold writing, about two-thirds of the way down, it says 10 DBA and 5 DBA. It's right in this vicinity on the application. But importantly, what it also says is that amplification use has to stop. And you've got to show when you're finishing your application, implication there. So you have to stop at midnight is when you stop with that. And signed by the new owners. And they've got an application that really looks very similar to the application filed by Hennessy, although it's not in color. It still shows orientation. And next, at the next page, which first page is black and white, it's pictures there sideways. And I sent Code officers over to take pictures of what's on the property and to look at the condition. You'll see the speakers are below the top of the wall. That wall is normally referred to as a parapet wall. This is a rooftop bar, and it has a wall that was built as part of the hotel originally, I believe. And then there's some additional rail with plexiglass to contain the noise. The speakers shown on the wall are the way they were supposed to be placed, and the way that Hennessy placed them, but really never used them. And what we actually think is that Hennessy showed the stuff, it never functioned much, and he did what he wanted to after the permits were issued. So the application, though, for the new applicant is they will be using the speakers in this location with the orientation towards A1A, towards the ocean, and away from the homes that are on Grand View and other streets nearby. There are multiple pictures there, and you'll see the speakers shown on the wall. Those are being refurbished by the new owner. In the second picture, if you look at it, which is this one, you'll see there's a sort of a cabin-like structure on the roof of the building. And that is, in fact, a part of the bar facilities at the Streamline. The new owner intends to place the DJ actually inside the enclosed space of the building. You won't have the DJ outside. The new owner also has decimal meters in their phones, and they're going to have electronic controls of their phones, so they actually can go around the property and turn volume down, if that's what needs to be done, from the standpoint of how they will manage the property. And Mr. Kong will be here in a moment to talk to you and, or to give you his comments. On the next page, which is the first color photograph, you'll see speakers that hang off the wall. Those were never permitted to be there. All the speakers were supposed to be below the parapet wall, but Hennessy did place speakers on the walls like that. They should not have been there regardless of the direction that they were facing. And there is no proposal to continue that practice with the new application. And I should say too, the new application has not been, has not been approved or issued. It's here, and I know the manager wanted to have the commission have the opportunity to hear comments and so on from everyone involved. The next picture doesn't show you a great deal, but you look at the bottom left, you'll see there's a speaker there at the lower wall. And I should point out to you too, that where I could, when, when the picture looks to the east or west, you'll see a little E and a little W. That's telling you, west is one side, east is the other. And the pictures turn, depending on which ones. So they're labeled, so you can see which direction you're looking. As in the next one, it's taken from the west side, looking east, down the rail where the seating area is, along the outside part of the roof. The building that you see there is also occupiable by people that are customers. The next page, which is this picture, shows you some seats, and also another structure, which I think is a part of an elevator house, actually looks to the east. You'll see the seating and so on is being diminished as you move to the, I'm sorry, to the west, being diminished as you move to the west. The next picture just really kind of gives you perspective, and that's the reason for showing it. There's no speakers involved there, and nothing intended to be placed there. Another picture of a speaker, this one, I think, is actually looking to the south. You can see ISB and the vacant property that was owned by Hennessy that's no longer, it's part of the SIG ownership, which Mrs. Hennessy maintained ownership of the vacant land north of Fifth Street. And then finally, just a couple more pictures of speakers and the property itself, so you can get some idea of the way it looks. And you might think to yourself, okay, why would someone want to have or be able to have this use? And the question came up back last year, and planning staff got together. I did write a memorandum to the city attorney, that said that the use was a permitted use, and that you had to work with a permitting process, and that memorandum is there from May of 2021. And so from the perspective of the right of the property, or the opportunity for the property, to obtain a sound amplification permit, they do have that opportunity. They also, though, have to operate under the standards allowed by the code. And there are provisions for the sound amplification permit to be withdrawn, and they wouldn't be able to have outside sound amplification. Something else that may be a little mixed up in terms of the way things work, the sound amplification permit and the extended hours permits are two different things altogether. Extended hour permits have to do with consumption or in sale of liquor on the property. By law, in Daytona Beach, you stop sale of liquor at 12, unless you have the extended hours permit, which allows you to go to 2. And the Streamline new owners have applied for that permit. It is freestanding and separate from the outside sound amplification, which sound amplification is a permit also provided for in our code, which is issued separately and has to be renewed every six months. It also can be terminated. That's the nature of the ordinance. I know, one of the emails that I saw said the decision to allow the speakers in the first place was wrong. I don't agree with that conclusion. And we've looked at the code. I've had numerous staff people look at this matter today and other days as well, because the Hennessy operation, frankly, was a problem, always a problem in any number of things that they did. And that's a part of the reason, a part of the reason, I think, that the Hennessy family decided to sell the property to new owners. So I'll be happy to try and answer questions if you have questions. And if you want to go back to any of the pages I've gone through, certainly try to address questions you may have related to that.
I just have a statement, because I've said to you many times, I'm from a musical family. If this is done right, that street would not hear the music. They have to have the plexiglass. It bounces, those speakers. It would bounce off the plexiglass if the speakers are pointed in the right direction, towards the ocean. So they just have to have someone professional come and place those speakers. And then the residents, we wouldn't even be here talking about this if it was done in the right way in the first place.
And I appreciate that reminder, because they are present, this new owner is presently working with an installing company. And the sergeant was there from the Police Department today, who commands that shift, and he's actually going to go over at the invitation of the owner, when they finish doing the modifications to the property within tomorrow or the next day. So that we have coordination with the Police Department, and as well as with the Police Department, there are nighttime officers that work those events. And they will also be coming in, if they wish, with the Police Department, for us to go through the different codes with them. There was an instance with the new owner where one police officer was there, didn't find anything wrong, and went on. The complaints continued to come in, and another officer came in. I think he did write a notice to appear. No one was arrested. It's a ticketable offense, I think $100, according to the ticket that I read. So, from the perspective of the conclusions, it's sometimes difficult for people to understand how it's supposed to be done. But the permit itself speaks for itself. There's a diagram, there's a placement for the speakers, and speakers are supposed to be in that location, and orientated in the way that the diagram shows it should be. It's in an entertainment zone, it's in the main street area, it's a hotel that's historic, and it's a part of the way business is done in Daytona Beach for accommodations and tourist entertainment.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know if the, the speakers that they put on the wall are functional?
We do know. Some of them were not. They're being repaired and replaced now. So they will be all functional by Friday.
But I thought we said the ones on the wall were not supposed to be on the wall.
No, I'm sorry. The ones, I'm, I'm, there's two walls.
Okay.
There's a parapet wall, and there was the upper walls. The one on the upper walls, I don't think were functional, and also not supposed to be there. But I haven't really have.
Those are the ones I'm referring to?
Yes, ma'am. Those are supposed to be removed. I didn't pay much attention to that, other than, you've got to get them down. You can't have them regardless.
Okay.
Um, y'all, anybody have anything? Because here's my point. We obviously had a person that didn't have any intent, and they showed it, over and over and over for years. And these people had to live like this. And frankly, we didn't do enough. So I, I don't have any tolerance personally. I don't know how the rest of you feel. But I don't have any patience for people who usurp the rules that we have. And I've always been that way. We have rules, we support business. No one can tell us that we don't support business. We allow itinerant vending. We allow a lot of things, so that businesses can thrive in this community. But when you don't do what we ask, and what we, what are reasonable rules, I think we have a obligation to shut it down. And I hope that people will understand that, because we also have an obligation to the people who live adjacent to that. So I don't have, I don't, and the rest of you can speak for yourselves, but from my perspective, we're not going to put up with this. If they, if they don't do right, it has to stop.
That was explained in detail this afternoon, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, I concur with the mayor, because they should have done their due diligence and have known the history behind the previous owner, and the difficulties we had with them. And they should not have come and done the same thing that they've done. And if they're not going to abide by the governing rules, shut them down.
All right.
No more playing.
Yeah.
And I think Mr. Sykes is in the back room, so he's also hearing the code enforcement. I know Officer Blumer is here as well.
Okay. Do we have any other? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. We will hear from our residents at this time?
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, before you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted some, some further direction on how you want to handle the transition to the new city attorney. It's my understanding that everybody's had a chance to speak with Mr. Gross. And if you'd like to move forward with the contract, in the past, we've appointed a commissioner to kind of, kind of fill a fact-finding role, and to bring a contract back to you. But we'll proceed at your discretion.
Uh, I'm for Mr. Gross. So, do we, anybody in opposition? No one? All right, we've got a good choice. So, um.
So we'll need, we'll need.
I usually appoint one person to do the contract.
Let Mr. Strickland do it. He's gonna go through with a fine tooth comb.
I think, isn't Mr. Strickland doing the manager's evaluation?
No, that's Cantu.
That's Commissioner Cantu?
So we have to let somebody on that side.
All right. Commissioner Strickland, would you?
I'd do.
Be happy to, all right. All right. You can work with Bob and the manager, and they'll help you. Okay?
And Mayor?
Yes.
I believe, are you the owner of the Streamline? Should we hear from him? We are talking about his business.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about your business. You want to speak to us and come up?
I have thick pants, I can take my lips.
Huh? What'd you say?
He got thick pants, he can take the lips.
I said, I want my thick pants, so I can take my lips. I'm the new owner.
Yes, sir.
I want to do that very.
Yes, sir. Come on up. Welcome to Daytona Beach.
I, well.
Well, welcome to, to that part.
I've been a resident of Flagler County for 35 years. Don't hold that against me. But I love Daytona. I spend a lot of time there. I'll let these gentlemen introduce themselves. This is one of the partners in our group, and this is our interim general manager.
Bobby Betzalil.
Rory Flott, I represent Reliance Hotel Group as the management company for the Streamline Hotel.
Okay, welcome.
And I'm the guy. I'm Greg Kong. Residents, obviously, or the property is 140 South Atlantic Avenue, Daytona Beach. I'm a resident of Palm Coast in Flagler County. So first off, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to speak, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. And the one thing that I want to comment on, first of all, the, the city staff, they were extremely proactive, your, your code, or your permitting office. When I was there on Friday, so we closed on this property on March 24th, to the tune, in contract, it was $6,750,000, all in. We're $7 million in on the property. And to misread the comments on due diligence, we did some extensive due diligence. Unfortunately, some things, you know, you just, we're so concerned about the building and the structure, and so many other things. And you were absolutely right. I'm not going to disagree with you there. But there's things along the way that, you know, that I've discovered in the three weeks that I, I'm like, how did we not check this? So I, I agree with you 100%, but we could, we just, there's, we just can't cover everything, because we have certain timeframes to also do stuff. And this was a, a very interesting transaction, to say the least. It, it was something that was in the planning for a year. I, by profession, I'm a licensed real estate salesperson, state of Florida. And I've done many commercial transactions, and this, this one was a doozy, for everyone involved that we were dealing with. And thank God it ended, you know, ended the way it ended, and we have the property. Property, obviously, as you know, is, I mean, it's a landmark property. I love the property. I've been coming here before I was a resident of Flagler County for spring break, you know, 600 North. So, yeah, hey, raise the roof. So, you know, I love this town. I mean, I'm a transplant from New York City, and the minute I stepped there, I can't wait to come back. So, you know, as far as us being part of the ownership group that owns this property, it's something that we're very proud of. We have some incredible ideas, of which I will work very closely when Ms. Rose asks you, and to make sure that we're in compliance. But to just speak to the, the message tonight, and to address some of the residents in the area, I want to be a good neighbor. I absolutely want to be a good neighbor. There are some things that were commented on, that I think just mere, and I might not use the word, the right terminology, but just science itself. I mean, that plexiglass, or it's actually glass that's there around the perimeter. You know, if the wind's blowing from the east, there ain't nothing keeping that music down. You know, I mean, it's, it's gonna go. We have, when I found out, and by the way, I've been finding out the rules little by little, and I've been hearing different versions of what the rules are, from, you know, officers, from city, things like that. That's why, after I had all the, the visits on, on Friday and Saturday, I, I promised the officer, I forgot his name, he was a tall gentleman sergeant, who was on duty that night. And he even came on Friday and took pictures and said, you're in compliance. But I, I said, I'm going to be at the city Monday morning. And I was in your code office, and, you know, or the permitting office, rather, and we were trying to work through everything. I filled out forms, did everything I was supposed to. With that said, the discoveries that we made on, on one of the pictures that Mr. Morris submitted to you, and I, I don't know page numbers, but this picture here, these speakers aren't even supposed to be up there. I, you know, so tomorrow, we actually hired, to speak about audio, somebody said they, they had a music background. I, I have an electronics background. I stink of music, but I have an electronics background. And we hired All Wire Tech, which is a professional audiovisual security service. He came out, and this was, came after my meeting from Monday. I called him up, he came out, and I was able to get him out and re, have him reschedule his stuff, because he's like, oh, man, I know that place. I love Latin night. You know, he's, he would come there for Latin night. So he came, I said, dude, I need you, you know, because you've got to come help me here. So he came yesterday. They already started yesterday on doing some rewiring and fixing things. And then he couldn't come today. He said it will be done tomorrow. I've got three amps that are on the floor that are shot. All the equipment in there was a mishmash. It was just, it's just not the right setup. Wasn't a professional setup. So he's bringing in the right equipment. All these speakers along this wall, they, they weren't on. They weren't operating. The stuff's corroded. So what was happening, the DJs are bringing in their boom boxes on, and putting up on these pedestals, which is a violation. But what they were doing was they were turning it towards the ocean. Again, word I got, oh, speakers got to be facing the east. Great. They, they, I didn't see anything about, oh, yeah, but they got to be down here, you know? So, again, my meeting with Mr. Morris and his staff, it, it was a great meeting. And also, the officer that was there that's in charge of this, the sergeant, you know, we, I said, what do I need to do? Let, let's figure this out. And we all worked and came up with what I need to do. And I promised them, by tomorrow, those speakers are down. The other speakers along the wall, they're going to be fixed, and, and the amps inside, and I don't know all the technical jargon, but the amps, where they're placed, they're going to have different channels, which control different speakers, which mean, you know where I'm going with this.
I'm not a professional, but I've been.
You, you, I mean, listen, we, we kind of, yeah, we kind of.
I get it.
So we're going to be able to modulate the sound, you know, to different parts of the building, keep it up front on the. keep it up front on the east side. Again, I've been taking meter readings. I've been walking to the west end of the building going, because according to the code, it's 100 feet away. The readings have to be taken, no grade in 100 feet away. I've been taking readings and, you know, I've been having them turn the music down to certain levels to stay underneath the 60 decibels that's in the code. From what I've discovered also, if you're two blocks away, sometimes the music sounds louder. And I don't know what to fix this for that unless you dome the whole thing. But we've been trying to be in compliance with everything. And I think after this gets done and the DJs get moved inside to the lounge area, that's going to be a tremendous fix right there because there's not going to be any more elevated podium speakers. And, you know, after midnight, obviously, there's not going to be any outdoor amplification because that's what's required by code. We're going to be just going off of the inside speakers that are inside the lounge area. So, um, blah, 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 blah. I missed one of the best parts of my little notes here, which was, listen, we're new owners. March 24th is when we closed on the property. I wasn't on property until midweek of the following week as far as monitoring these events. Since we've been there, there's been so many little things that can add up to big things that I've been taking care of, myself and Koby. I mean, Koby's the technical guy and kind of handles the finance stuff. I'm the, the needs-to-get-done-do-it guy. So all I'm asking you is, please, give us the opportunity. Give us the opportunity to be wrong. Don't let me live by the sins of previous owners. Yes, sir.
Would you be willing to meet with the neighborhood residents?
Absolutely. I have, I hope some of them are here tonight, and we could talk. I mean, absolutely.
Okay.
I said, I wore my thick jeans tonight.
You can meet with them, but I don't think they want to meet too much.
Well, it-
They just want some sound to be controlled and be within compliance. But they are wonderful people. I'll just leave it at that.
I do not doubt that at all.
They will be happy to talk with you because they're kind and good citizens. But they just want to be able to live in good relationship with the Streamline because we all value the Streamline.
It's a beautiful building.
It's a phenomenal facility, phenomenal, and important to our history.
Yes. And to that point, there are some ideas that, I was going to say me, but I got to give my wife credit. There's some ideas that my wife had that we want to implement there because of it being the birthplace of NASCAR and kind of going off that theme. You know, we kind of want to do a little, I mean, kind of like a Hollywood Walk of Fame where you have these drivers come and grab a steering wheel and stick their hands into plaster. And we put it along our walkway and things like that. And it just becomes another attraction, you know? So it's, I mean, as it is, I've seen people stop in front of hotels and, you know, "Take a picture, take a pic," you know, of the sign outside. So I recognize, or we recognize, the historical aspect of that building. And listen, like I said, I've been coming here since the 80s. I've lived here since, you know, 1984. I do not want that hotel going back to what it was. And we all know what it was before the Hennessy. So I'm not even going to go there. But we do not want that, thank God. So credit to him for what he did in renovating. But, you know, I'm a little older and I don't know if, you know, a little wiser, but I do know, you know, I don't like getting licks. So I'm gonna, you know.
We got you.
Could you have somebody designated on-site on the weekends that if the neighbors are having some issues, that they could call directly? And maybe get some, huh?
There's, thank you, but there's usually a manager on-site. And a lot of time, like so far, it's been me or my food and beverage manager or someone. But really, what they should do is call the front desk, press 1, goes, or call the hotel, press 1. It goes right to the front desk, and we'll get a message over to somebody right away.
And then what happens?
Is it that the music is too loud? I mean, I guess it depends what the complaint is. Well, again, if we're operating on 60 decibels up until midnight, we're within compliance of the code. So, I mean, and then after 12 o'clock, you know, all the outdoor amplified music is supposed to be off. So, I mean, I'm trying to, my goal is to operate within the guidelines of the code. And that was what's something we had a lot of clarity on this afternoon, this morning at the meeting.
Okay.
I'm not sure who you're using, but if you find out you're needing someone, you can always call Total Entertainment. They're right down the street, and they can always give you someone. It's on ISB.
As far as what?
For someone to help you with the sound or?
Well, we have a professional, this is what they do. It's called All Wire Tech. They do audiovisual. They've, he threw out some names of some of the businesses and stuff that they do. They're not a small operation. They're a professional operation.
Okay. Because you can always hire a sound guy, too, on the weekends, so you wouldn't have that. But I'm just giving you some ideas.
No, no, I get it. And that's what I'm saying. We, that's why we, you know, we started taking readings on decibel meters, so.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who's Manuel Gomez?
Manuel Gomez is one of our owners. He's up in New York. He's the principal owner.
Okay, because he's the one who signed this sound amplification permit. So I just want to make sure, and you will be able to tell your staff what is required of them because I know you guys can't be there all the time.
We're, we're, so I live here-
Just in case.
I live here, and so does Koby. We're Florida residents. And we, that's our goal. I mean, Rory will tell you, the management contract agreement that we have with them took three months to ratify because we said, "Yeah, no, we need to do this. We need to be there. We need to be..." So we're very hands-on owners. And the intention is, it's either going to be the general manager, it's either going to be one of us, you know, or the food and beverage manager that's going to be on-site and that's responsible to adhere to those rules, which is going to be policy.
Whoever's in charge, you'll let them know what rules they should be following.
Yes, ma'am. I can guarantee you of that. It's going to be in the policy manual.
Okay.
We'll be here for any follow-up comments if you'd like. Thank you.
Okay. Our first speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is John Navara.
All right, let's go.
Mr. Brown, still here?
Let's go, let's go.
I was about to call the next person.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge. First thing I want to address to you is something I wanted to address earlier again was Bridgeport Heights River Park. As I mentioned before, we lost Randy, and I've requested that we put a memorial bench there. His widow and his son have prepared a letter. We'll be bringing that in later. I really want you to consider it. I know I've talked to you, Mr. Mayor, about it. And I believe you'll be supportive of it. I am concerned about, in particular, the resident that lives on the north side who's continually violated the 14 pages of illegal agreement that they forced upon the citizens, which we really kind of thought was an overkill. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you stated that as well. And they continue to violate many of the provisions in that. Now, the park originally had fences on both sides. They, the residents on the north side chose to tear down the fence. And when we got the land back, of course, now we have no fence, and there's nothing to separate the property. There also previously was a green belt there. Mr. Ritchie, who owned it at the time, decided to demolish that so that he could make the public land look like it was part of his property to enhance the sale of his property, which worked. He made a considerable profit off of that. I would like to see that green belt reinstated so that the residents who use the park can have their privacy. The owner on the north side has chosen to put a camera, which is actually physically on the property line. One might argue that it's over the property line, with monitoring, with audio monitoring and video monitoring. I don't want to have that in a public park. So I'd like to see the green belt and the fence reestablished. There seems to be a lack of determination of where the property lines actually lie because Mr. Ritchie, in the years that he lived there, overstepped his bounds. His driveway is, all the apron is fully in the public land. There is a number of gardening things that are fully in public land. I'd like to see that all cleaned up and handled as a park, like every other park is. And again, it means a lot to a lot of us, especially now that Randy's passed on. But he'll be watching from above. I just want the city to do the right thing and make it a nice park, a nice place to be. And, Mr. Mayor, I know you've been there, and you know how nice and peaceful that place can be. I just, we need a buffer between that and the northern property. The other issue I wanted to address, of course, is flooding. I've already mentioned it several times. I only have 10 seconds. Please, 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 I can't say this enough. Everyone, you need to see the Dutch solution, if you haven't seen it already. I know some of you have, but please watch it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Navara, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening. John Navara, 168 Springwood Drive, Daytona Beach. The rainy season is coming, and I have some ideas that might help the city to be a better place to live. I have an idea that the city could take donations for the people that could be displaced by the coming flooding. And what could be offered would be gift cards for food from the public. That would be acceptable, I think. If the city needs blankets or pillows, maybe donated from the public. Board games for children that might have a lot of time that they're spending at a facility, and that would make their lives a lot better. Crayons coloring books for the younger children could be donated from the public. And maybe books for older residents or something that would make their time a little better. I work with a faith organization, and I'm the secretary of the Volusia Flagler, AFL-CIO. There's an enormous interest in our public for helping people who are displaced by the flooding. And I think that if the city could take the donations, go directly to the city, the residents get all of the donations 100% if they could be stored somewhere and given out to the public. I know that in 1991, when we went to the Persian Gulf War, there were so many donations to our armed forces. And I heard a lot of goodwill for, on TV, about the armed forces being helped by the public and making their lives a little better. I think that this event, the talk could be, instead of the tragedy of the event, it would be a discussion about the generosity of the public. And I would be glad to seek out getting donations for this action and any way I could help. And I just hear a lot from the public and people just saying they want to help, but they're not sure how. So I haven't heard it being addressed. I know you probably have a plan, maybe the Ocean Center, for a place where people would go. But I do hear a lot of people in the public saying they do want to help, but they need to know where they could give donations. And I think if the city manager, Fiercher, wants to have a workshop where he could reach out to the public and have a public discussion of how we can help the people of the city of Daytona Beach because there are friends, there are neighbors, there are people in our society that need our help at their most vulnerable point. And we want to make it where the, it's not a facilitation, that it is a chance for the public to really contribute. But thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Marjorie Johnson, Key Street, Daytona. I attended the faith meeting, and all of the commissioners on this side was missing in action. Monica did meet with them and did an hour with them, and she told them that she needed more information. And Mayor Hendry, you did show up, but your answers were very vague. And I'd just like to say that I would like to see the commissioners who was missing in action, Clarita May, Paula Reed, Danette, basically, too, to show up to these meetings and answer these questions because a lot of this, these are very important issues concerning the flooding and the other issues that concern our community. And I was disappointed when I saw that most of the commissioners were missing. And there's no answers as to why they were missing. But Ken Strickland, he did do an interview with them, and I was happy with the answers that he gave. And Monica, she met with them, and she informed them that she needed to do more research. So what we have to do, since you are paid to do your job, is to show up at these meetings and answer these questions. In the past, our commissioners showed up and they answered the questions. So you are here to do the people's work, and that's what you need to do. Also, I want to address the fact that I have brought this to the commission before, that there are streets that need to be paved in this area. My beautiful daughter, Kimberly Mount, came here and told you about some streets. I saw the city manager jot them down, live vote. The Miss Reed grew up terrible, all cracked up, all messed up. Needs to be fixed. Maple Street need to be fixed. And I served on the library board. I was at the county meeting last night myself and some of the other residents of the city of Daytona, John was there, and some others, and we addressed issues over there. And so what I want to say to you tonight, this flooding problem is a serious problem, and that needs to be addressed. And these people over there are calling me on the phone, telling me how they was all flooded out. And what is the city doing? A lot of them came up into the meeting, and they spoke to you about this flooding problem that's been going on for years and years and years. And the fact that somebody gets in a boat and drives around and look at the flood, and that's not solving the issue. What have you done to prepare for this flooding before it happens? So, you know, we can't have excuses. We need you to look at these problems, and we need you to solve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Can I say something, please?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson, I think maybe you need to look at our social media because sometimes we can't be at four events at one time. I think I went to probably five this week, different meetings in my zone. And for the Midtown flooding, I don't know if you haven't heard because I do see you up here, or haven't read the newspaper. We do have the Army Corps coming here, and the staff has been working hard and everyone else up here. So I don't, not sure if you didn't see it. And if you didn't, email me, and I will send all that information over to you.
No clarification from the audience. No clarification. Your time is up.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Amy Pyle.
One meeting, folks. We'll have one meeting. You guys can go outside and talk. Go ahead.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. With regard to the meeting on Thursday, there were several things, and I clarified it with the gentleman that spoke. And I'm prefacing this with if. If the gentleman is correct, all right, in all his assumptions, one, I'm asking for you to consider, to discuss, a map for the flooding. His concept is that the map that we have is for insurance purposes only. It's not the locations that may flood. If his recommendation is that we do a map so that all of our residents know where there's flooding probability, that they can get insurance because many of them didn't realize they were going to flood, so they didn't get insurance. So to me, that sounds logical. The second thing is, he spoke about the sea rise. Whether you believe it or not, I believe that the sea is rising. Whether you believe it or not, I believe that the sea is rising. And he said with that, the water seeks its level, so our aquifer is rising along with the sea level. So what's happening in Midtown is that the sea level was at one point and as it rose, our aquifer rose with it, leaving less land in Midtown to absorb the water. And I believe this to be true. And he made a comment that we can dig almost half of it up and it won't do, it won't solve the problem. So we had to come back with an idea for Midtown that does not involve digging up more and more land. And third, with regard to Midtown, Mayor, I like your idea of rising, because one of the gentlemen, and we spoke about this, that the older homes that are up on bricks, the water went underneath it and they had less problems than those that were on the ground. So if we could find a way, I know Key West did it, they retrofitted and almost all of Key West now is built on stilts. And if that's a way of having the land so that people are not displaced, because they get attached to their community, they get attached to their land, if we can find a way of raising those houses, I've asked a couple of them, would you stay in Midtown if every five years when we have these floods, if the water would be around your house for a day, a week, and then would receive, but nothing would happen to your house? All of them said they would prefer to stay there. So if we can find a way for them to stay there, I think we should concentrate on that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next.
Our next speaker is Amy Pyle and on deck is Stephen Pyle.
Amy Pyle, 136 South Granview. Mr. Morris saved me a lot of time telling you all about Eddie Hennessy's violations, because I was going to run through how horrible the last seven years has been. Who's to blame? Could they have enforced? Could they have, you know, affected some change somehow? Why was it happening over and over again? Mr. Morris, can he answer that question? And now we want to go through it again. I will tell you a couple of things. Number one, Mr. Kong received an email from Kim Flaherty on April 12th saying that if sound amplification is desired, a separate application for sound amplification permit will need to be submitted. So he knew he needed one. The streamline is in RDB5. Can anyone tell me if RDB5 is allowed to have a bar, lounge, or nightclub? According to the use chart in the LDC, the answer is it's a blank, which means it's not permitted. I understand they have a bar and lounge, Streamline's always had a bar and lounge, but the outside sound amplification makes it a nightclub with live entertainment primarily. And that's what they're advertising, live entertainment, DJ parties, all kinds of things. It goes all Sunday afternoon and it goes, you know, from Thursday, Friday. I saw that Facebook ads are taken down since this morning, but, you know, they had a DJ every night, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So in RDB5, to get, you know, you come in and you ask for a sound amplification permit, it is not, you know, a sound amplification permit is one thing. Is there anywhere else in the city that it is above ground level like that? You know, four stories in the air. I will tell you, you cannot get 100 feet from that thing without floating in the air to measure a decibel level. You've seen the chart, I sent it to you and, you know, my little drawing that shows that that music comes directly to my house. If the speakers are faced east, they bounce off the wall and it comes directly to my house. There are other living places. There's hotels and condos to the east. You can't just say face east. The ordinance says they're supposed to face towards the interior of the building. So Mr. Kong said exactly what he needed to say is that the only way to stop the sound from traveling 400 feet to my house is to dome it over completely, otherwise, you know, he says, otherwise, I don't know. So a wall. I mean, would you want that next to your house, Stacy? I don't think so. It's not an, you know, Mr. Morris just said it was an entertainment zone. It's not an entertainment zone. It's not in the Main Street entertainment zone. It's a redevelopment zone with a beautiful hotel. I want them to succeed. People I know would want to go up on, I want to keep talking for just another minute, because he had about six minutes.
You can't.
But, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, this is something that really...
I'm sorry, Ms. Pyle, your time is expired. Our next speaker is Stephen Pyle and on deck is Kenneth Bach.
Okay, no, she's all right. Go ahead, Amy. Your time's up.
I'm going to start.
That's from my bedroom.
Okay.
At 12:30 a.m.
Stephen, time going?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I, I...
This Saturday.
I really love my mom. I really love my mom. She's the most incredible, brilliant, amazing, talented woman that I know. And I've watched for the last seven years, her and my awesome stepdad be tortured. It's torture to have to spend your weekend evenings unable to sleep, where earplugs don't work, nothing works, it's just blasted, even with the Plexiglas, there's subwoofers and that bass travels. And they, like Mr. Morris, he came up here and he spoke about all these different things that Eddie Hennessy was doing wrong. And yet he was still doing it over and over and over again for seven years.
I think that's wrong.
So, yeah, maybe it was six years, maybe it was five years. It was, it was a long time. And I watched them be tortured for a long time. And at one point, it needs to stop. Where's that point? Where's that point where it stops? Why not today? You know, if it's allowed to continue now, then will it, will it stop? What will cause it to stop after that? So my mom has put years, 13 years of her own blood, sweat, and tears, of her own hands, not paying people to do it. Her and my stepdad, Dave, are craftsmen. They are incredibly talented people who have put an incredible amount of time and work into their properties in Daytona Beach, turning them from dilapidated junkhouses into beautiful structures with their own hands. And I've watched them do it. I've watched the, the time and the effort and the years that they've put into Daytona Beach. And I love Daytona Beach. I love it here. And I watched them be tortured. And at one point, maybe, when does it stop? So that's my comments. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kenneth Bach and on deck is Sandy Murphy. Kenneth Bach?
I'd like to thank this young lady, by the way. I just happened to hear about the meeting tonight and I was over cutting some of my properties and I said, I got to get to that meeting. I got to get there, because I want to reintroduce myself. I've been, I've been in the community for 20-plus, 40 years, meaning I have a house in South Daytona for 20, 20 years, and then I have a couple of properties on Martin Luther King I've had for almost 20 years. And one of them I just repurchased. It's right behind a convenience store that I used to own, 518 South Martin Luther King. And I repurchased it because I believe sometimes history repeats itself. I mean, you got to go back and finish your, your goals. I'm a motivational speaker online and I try to help young people not to go after money. I try to teach them to go after their, their goals and their dreams. And I like to do that myself. And I like to walk my properties. I like to be on the properties. I like to talk to my neighbors. I like to be a good neighbor. I have other properties in another state and some other places out in Deland. And I try to be a good neighbor wherever I'm at. So I try to get permission to do what I'm going to do and this is what I want to talk about. And right behind 518 South Martin Luther King, which that's a convenience store, MLK Grocery, I think it still might be called that, is a lot that I repurchased. I had it for like 10 years and I sold it to the gentleman that worked at the store. And I still managed it. And a few years ago, I got in trouble on that property. And what I mean by that, I had to go to court. I got arrested for one night. I got, I had to go to court and it took me two years to prove my innocence that I was still managing the property. So we, I ended up buying the property back, 60% of it, so I could take it under management again and we could develop it and do something with it. And what I'm looking to do now, on this property, of course, with your permission, and another property that I already talked to Hannah about, I got, I want to say, basic permission, meaning I haven't done the permits yet, but, and I always like to do permits and go through the city and make sure I do things according to plan. But anyway, what I'm looking to do, because I see my time's running, I'm looking to put storage containers in there. Actually, 40 by eight-foot storage containers on these properties. Like this particular property is a business, a B8 zoning, and it's right behind the convenience store. And I'd like to put a total of eight there. I'd like to stack them. But first, the first floor, I'd like to turn them into storage units where, let's say, a lawn business wants to store their equipment, stuff like that, or somebody wants to store whatever it is they want to store in that area, they could put it in the lower units. And then a year later, a year later, I'd like to put apartments. But I wanted to introduce myself, so you know who I am, you're going to be seeing a little bit of me. And so far, on one property, I did get it basically approved through Hannah and I talked to Hannah again last week and, and that's why I'm here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I hope you'll see more of me and I'll be more quiet next time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening. Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I want to go back to the streamline. I am very happy to see the new owners here tonight, but I'm not so happy that they're not willing to offer their own numbers for those times at 1:00 in the morning when that property is a problem. I think that's something that they should be willing to do. You know, Jim Morris came up here and said this was in an entertainment district. Your maps in the, in the city website say that it is RDB5. And in that zone, nightclubs are not allowed. And that is operating as a nightclub on top of that property. So this is something that has been allowed to go on, even though it seems as if it's not even permitted under the LDC right now. On top of that enforcement is a nightmare. Every time a, a new police officer comes out, they have to be educated by the homeowners. And it's sometimes starting from the ground up about what has to be done. And as much as you want to say, well, we'll train people, the police officers are not in the business of going around measuring sound and that is their lowest priority. But it's not a low priority for the people whose bedroom windows are shaking. And that shouldn't be something that they have to put up with. Two things I think need to change absolutely is that the decibel level around the bottom of that property means nothing. The decibel level in the neighborhood is what needs to be measured to determine if that property is a nuisance. And that needs to be a change in, in our ordinances. The second thing is that a $100 fine is ridiculous. That is easy to dismiss as a cost of doing business. If there are repeat violations, we should have provisions for those fines to go up and to go up dramatically so that folks in the neighborhood aren't repeatedly subjected to this. Those are my points on that. Secondly, I want to talk very briefly about the charrette that the housing authority had on Thursday night. We had a good attendance despite hailstorms and thunder. And what we were trying to do is show the properties we own in Midtown and ask for what people want to see happen on those properties. And although we got a lot of good input, I just want to emphasize with you how important it is to keep telling people about what is happening with the flooding, because overwhelmingly, everything came back to that. And unless we're getting information out to folks to talk about how things are progressing, people are just worried. It's hurricane season coming up and I think you can't put up, out too much information on that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak and on deck is Ann Ruby.
As Jenny's coming, I forgot about that meeting. We were there, the city manager and I. And then also, the mayor and I, the city manager were there for the dirt, for Tirti. None of us mentioned that as well.
Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey. So it's Earth Day week. Yeah, eco stuff. So let's start out by saying thank you to Kathy Rosado and Letitia Nometlomagna, who have got the reusable drinking vessels and the pitchers of water. Yay! Things like this are cool, are very cool. So, so sorry, we don't do that. Things like this are so cool, not just for the, what, the impact of what it is here, but it ripples outward and it conveys a certain manner. And I think, I hope everyone will have fun with the self-expression of the cups. I'm sure we'll be seeing like Buck Pride and all sorts of things appear on, on different cups. Okay, so Earth Day, yeah. Obviously flooding, huge topic. And on my side of the city, on the beach side, we're like, oh, the rains finally got here. But also, that comes with fear. It's like, wow, has anyone's houses started flooding yet over there? And every time on the beach side, there's like real violent landscaping, cutting things too short and cutting things away and removing the sponge, I'm like, each square inch of this is maybe a flood over in Midtown. And I think, I can't help but think about that. And sorry to cry, but to cause more flooding with my eyeballs, but I always think about that. And I know, I'm just like a random citizen who showed up here and sort of like hired myself as a civilian grassroots soldier of the environment. I'm just random. But I literally lose sleep over this stuff. And I will blame one person. If one house gets flooded, again, I'll blame one person, because I will think, oh gee, I could have said this better, or I should have sent that article, or I shouldn't have gone out drinking that night, I should have gone to the city meetings. Like now I wanted to go to a restaurant and have some Negronis and pasta. But, you know, I'm human. I love this city. I love us all. And the asset of a city is its people. And the whole point of working on the environment, okay, the earth is going to be just fine without us humans. The earth and other species will be more than fine. The purpose of working on the environment is to save us and so we can hang out and live together and be livable for everybody and not so. Some people are literally getting rained out of their houses while on my side of town, people are, you know, things are getting meticulously swept so that I could maybe sit down if I wanted to and eat a cheeseburger off the sidewalk. Like I don't need to eat a cheeseburger off the sidewalk. Things don't need to be that clean. It's the beach. Beach, the beach is scruffy. It's full of sand. It's all windy. We have wildflowers, tall grasses and stuff over there. It's like a more soft, shaggy sort of place. We're allowed to be a little more like laid back on the beach side. That's all. Thank you. Happy Earth Day. Love you.
Thank you. And for the record, I have to say that Kathy really spearheaded that initiative. So I want to make sure she gets the credit she deserves for that. Our next speaker is Ann Ruby and on deck is John Birch.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I want to go back to the streamline. I understand that Eddie Hennessy tortured the residents for years. He did. And now we have new owners and they came up here tonight and pledged all their goodwill. But they've owned this property for three weeks. They owned this property last weekend when the noise was horrendous and things were out of control and they were no, and, and they went there and they, they were told it needed to calm down and be quiet and they didn't do anything. So where is the good faith? That's the, that's the concern. They're standing up here now saying, oh, we're going to get all our equipment checked. We're going to get things below where they need to be. Ignorance is not really a defense here, that they've had three weeks to figure this out. I don't, their good faith is rather meaningless if they do not, are not willing to have their phone number called at 1:00 in the morning and 10:00 at night. That's meaningless. Call the front desk. Give me a break. Same front desk person, get another $100 citation. I'm asking the commission to please give city staff some instruction and guidance on this. It cannot just be that it gets passed through. And you know, when you came here, Mr. Fiercher, you introduced the idea of a conditional use permit. Maybe they get a conditional use permit of two weeks. And for that two weeks, their equipment has to be in perfect working order. No more, oh, the speakers weren't set up right. Something has to be done. And if you guys are sick of hearing us complain about it, if you're sick of hearing the emails, then you need to do something. You need to give class, staff clear instruction on how to handle this. Because what's going on before is wrong and what went on last weekend was wrong. It was just wrong. And I understand they want to be good neighbors and that's fine. Come to Beachside Neighborhood Watch and meet the neighbors. But if, with, without putting their money where their mouth is in the neighborhood with the residents, it's meaningless to just come up here and prostrate themselves before you. That's it.
Our next speaker is John Birch.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor for giving me that great seven-foot-high jumper. Still two-state championship. Now, I've been on vacation for a while and I want you all to know, I've been in Bradford County Jail and I have learned a few things. That it's more unity in the jails than it is with drug dealers and all, than it is with the city and our people. And first of all, I want to thank you all for doing a good job, because your job is hard. I've been coming up here banging y'all up. I was going to bang you up, but I sat back. You know what I said to myself? Maybe if, Streamline, maybe if you owned the Streamline, you would know what they're going through. Maybe if you put up $7 million, you will realize that Daytona is a tourist town. I don't say everything is right or wrong, but it is a tourist town. And people love the party and so do I. And the party don't start jumping until, okay? You have a right to say no. You have a right to move. Maybe you shouldn't live in West Party. Now, back to why I'm really here. It's my limo. It's my limo that was a landmark that I love. I have ideas, I'm special ed. I love to create stuff within the law. I had my car and the flood took it out, transmission. I love to drive, I love to just do things, I have imagination. And code enforcement decided to say, you know, Mr. Birch, now go on to a place. Now, we're going to take his limo, which was legally tagged, and we're going to crush it. Now, you know how bad that felt whenever the police come to the same store that he'd be at? And I see drugs every day, and I've never sold drugs, never done drugs, and I've seen that neighborhood, but I've been an example. I sweep up, I clean up down the bashal. But to have my car crushed because you don't like me, that hurt, okay? And I don't think it was, and I went to Daytona Record just to get a letter to, so maybe FEMA said they'll pay me. Know what they told me? Get away from the gate. Now, I have an attitude because my voice is heavy and I try to adjust it, but I can't adjust it enough to satisfy people. I've been in Daytona all my life and I seen discrimination, I seen my mama screw up the floors. And all I say is, it's time for a change. But we should do, we should work together with the neighbors, we should all try to understand that you all have a big job to do. But that wasn't right what they did to my car, okay? But guess what? I forgive them, because now I'm buying me a Mercedes to cut. See, I'm that type, I'm a ball player. You won't never cause me to stop, because my mother put that in me. I get up early, I work for what I want. So all I say to you all, I'll be a part, I'm going to be a better player.
Thank you, sir. That was our final speaker, Mr. Murphy.
See you at the parade tomorrow night, 6 o'clock. Awesome job, Daytona Beach. Let's keep that sound down.